Join me in this. So what do you wish?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
So say on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes. From previous meeting, who the. Motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Minutes are approved. Uh, approval of the agenda. You see the updated agenda on your desk, we added the NDA CO uh twenty twenty-one delegate. We need to appoint somebody for that, that was added at the uh earlier today. Motion in a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Agenda is approved. Kevin, you want to up?
Alright. Start off with our projects, we've got all our bridge replacements left now. Uh, we put in. Four culverts, so twenty-four inch culverts. Those are all done. Um, I guess next start crew, we start like two weeks or a week and a half where we start a whole road ditch. And then at the same time, we'll start putting those. Uh, silver systems in the Alpine shops.
Any questions there? Kevin, when we uh do a bridge replacement with culverts. County is normally responsible for bridges.
Right.
Um, does that revert back to townships for the culvert repairs or?
Well, we generally, the way our policy reads is we, we come to an agreement with the township as to who's going to do maintenance and. Uh, replacements. So at any time we take out a bridge, we typically take over the maintenance and.
Generally, anything over what thirty-six inches or something?
Uh, the policy says thirty-six inches, but there's also a part for it. A navigable water. More than responsible for, so that's where the bridge, where the bridge is. Now that we've got one from Prospect Township, there was never a bridge, so it's kind of a gray area we've never had to deal with, so. That's part of my, the next thing on my list here.
So the continuum?
Or I guess it's on the bottom, but anyway. The first one, the regional lake, open roads conference. It's gonna be held, which is usually held at the city, it's gonna be held in two fall of this year. Uh, rooms are hundred and nine dollars a night for two nights, registration's a hundred and fifty. So the total's three sixty-eight, we, I need to drive down or ride with someone else. So I'd like to approve for the out of state travel for that.
What would you do?
The motion in a second to allow for the uh out of state travel for the road conference. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and just for your information, our cobble prices amount of another ten percent, but last. Two weeks ago, I had a stock order that I did get in before the increase on into effect. Like that was a fifty thousand dollar order or something. We saved about five grand there.
What happened, what happened, it was one or two percent, what happened then?
Yeah, the last, earlier we had a jump, it was twenty percent, now it's ten, so yeah, it's crazy, it's a new price. Okay, then back to Prospect Township, they have a seventy-two inch charge culvert, it must have collapsed in the last six weeks. And I needed to order a new one, and it's gonna cost eight hundred, or eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. I'll start my other on that number, I mean, I like the eight hundred better. Eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars in full piece now. So motion of market replace that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the uh. Cost for the replacement of the culvert up in Prospect Township. Eighty-one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Eighty-one hundred and fifty-seven seventy. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Were we getting that, or were we uh?
Just ordered, just ordered again. Okay, uh, this is one that was never ever a bridge, so it's a gray area that we're talking about. And of course, we had taken our excavator back, the big excavator back for where we were renting, so. Our maybe isn't quite big enough for this seventy-two inch charge. So. Uh, I, I guess in the end, I'm probably gonna end up paying for helping with the installing, I guess. When we see it right, there's like. Seven culverts in this spot, six of them are. Five footers and one's a six footer. So there's a lot of culverts there. Uh. It's a blue, if you look at the top map, it's a blue line, which according to Century Gold, if it's a blue line on a top map, it's a navigable waterway. Some, somebody wrote on a piece of paper that that's how that goes.
There's six culverts there already?
Yeah.
And they're usable?
No.
You think it needs one more?
I don't know, we're just in the past.
We're just replacing the one that's rusted out.
One that rusted out. Collapsed.
Yeah. So we're just basically keeping it the same as it was.
Exactly.
Right, it's just who's gonna pay for the install.
Yeah.
Who's gonna talk for that?
Huh?
County, you talk for that, installing it?
They're gonna install it. I guess right now, obviously gonna help them with it, but I didn't tell them back then. It's on tape now. It's, it's one of those sites that was never a bridge. If you look back in nineteen fifty-eight, I look back on our record, nineteen fifty-eight, it was four large culverts.
Always say those culverts there.
Interesting.
I would have a problem helping put in, but when we have our excavator rented, that's when I can see us do it. So I'm paying away till next year, yeah.
And this is the instance where they had, like collapsed, and I mean, it's.
There's already six there that are working, right?
Right.
Then we'd have to have a pretty rough winter and need more than six already.
Yeah, I mean, and that's way down the beginning of the coolie too. So I guess it's a quarter of you guys, you know, I mean, it.
Well, what kind of money are you up to? I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna rent the excavator again, so I'd have to hire somebody to do it for us.
That's a fair.
I, I would guess we should probably figure out what we think it's gonna cost and.
I think you're gonna hire the contractor out, because they are happy with the contractor up there, he's got time to do it, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm guessing it's gonna be three, four thousand, I don't know. But that's the whole project. That's the installation, we already, we are kind of obligated to pay for the culvert, that's part of our cost.
And whatever, yeah, probably get away next year.
Well, I'll keep up, up to speed on that, so you know what we're having. For now, we're just paying for the culvert. I guess that's all I got. We don't have a lot of these where they work. Bridges. I can maybe think of two or three other ones that would have river bridges. I think there's a lot of culverts there, a lot of them would be like a leak hole. Talk about that, or, you know, there must not be a river or a bridge there.
There's got, you know, you look at that, and there's gotta be like eight culverts there.
There's gotta be eight culverts there, yeah.
It's crazy that there'd be culverts in a river.
Yeah.
Bridges were pretty much the standard by then.
Well, and that handles a lot of water. What I should, I didn't make a question, doesn't handle nearly enough. To prevent flooding.
This site up on Prospect, like I said, it's little north of the watershed. I think there's probably only three structures upstream from this. I never looked at the size of it, remember?
Or all of them seventy-two inches, did they?
Five of them are, five footers and one, this one's a six footer. You can tell this one's been longer than the rest, it's really good. Bottom was completely rusted out. Collapsed on, so.
One of those deals where they started with three or four, and three or four weren't enough, and then they cracked out another, and they cracked out another, it's still. They just kept with culverts, as long as they had enough payment to push them.
It, um, it's one of, it comes down the road ditch, then moves underneath the road, and then will back down the road ditch again, so it's two ninety each and a roll. I mean, it's really tough, so that's probably another reason for all the culverts. It was a kind of a bottle act there.
Well, thank you. Uh, a little early for our hearing on tax exemption, so continuing on to do a little business, if that's okay with everybody. We have a homestead credit debayments, we have two of those in your packets. Moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the defunct. Credit debayments, although we will, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, approved beer liquor license, one month yield tavern.
I have a question, just out of curiosity, you say, one month doesn't, they, they pay a reduced rate, at least only one month? They just wanted it for one month? So they're not getting any advantage from it being only one month, like you said, the cost, which is only one month.
Yeah, if you look at these, I didn't think there was a problem with that. It's a waiting season, or they just wanna make sure they're above board with.
I didn't have a problem, I was just wondering if, like, you know, if you have approved a one month permit, if it was a deal where they said, well, if we go for a month, we don't have to pay one fault for prices. We get solid, it's expensive, so. Yeah, we're, we're pretty reasonable in terms of. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the one month uh beer alcohol license for the yield tavern. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion approved, approved special permit for the yield tavern. This kind of goes along with that. Motion to approve, second.
Second.
We have motion in a second to approve the. Special permit for yield tavern, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. And then the other item on the agenda would be the approval of the twenty twenty-one uh NDA CO delegate. This is done every auditor. At the uh North Dakota Association of Coloredes Conference. And they had a list of. Convention delegates. Last one for Ramsey County was Commissioner Whitefield. Lucas, do you know if you're planning to attend that conference?
Uh, I may very well be able to, but at the moment it's uncertain which date that is, uh, it's not on my name.
It's October third through the fifth.
Thursday, I, I should be able to attend, yeah.
Would you be interested in being the delegate at that convention?
If that's the role of the convention, I'm willing.
Yeah, sure, you can go yet, I'm not sure. Well, then I make a motion, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to appoint Mr. Whitefield as a convention delegate. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries, thank you, Commissioner Whitefield.
Thank you all.
And I'll have a room for you reserved too.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Visitors and delegations. Uh, we have none, we have the announcements, anybody with care to make?
Can spring one thing up? Absolutely. And I, I guess, um. Uh, I got the email too about this, it's just, I'll pass it on to Kevin because it's, uh. He sent out whatever, must be this engineer, sort of engineering the project. Uh, overlay, milling overlay, intersect, intersection realignment, and then overlay the rest of the parking lot out over on Highway two east, that was like out to the rest area, I believe. And I was wondering if we have any comments or anything that we'd like to include with that, and I think we have until. The twenty-third of August. The email, we directly, for some reason, I don't know why, and then the mail came, you might as well. The solid, you got one as well, and you all went to, okay, maybe I'm not doing that most special.
Alright, second page, said we have till the twenty-third.
Yeah, I just, I read the email and I sent it, and I thought it's kind of weird that we didn't. Not everybody, we didn't.
Well, I got one.
We did.
I got that.
Just figured I'd make a mention, because I wasn't sure if I was gonna own a guy, I didn't think he would have anything to add to it, but I figured.
I did sit on the James meeting, have a dues meeting already on this, and I thought, maybe they did ask for. And the commissioner. Had the interest. At this time, I said, not that I know of, I mean, we don't have any right of way out there, we don't have any product out there, so. But I said, I think I'm not probably sure about.
Why, I think in the past, people were pretty good about sharing, like, you think that there should be better intersections and maybe, or not four thousand of them, so there's one every fifty feet. And like, I had an opportunity one day, I talked to a supervisor, I was there. He was quite ways that day, and he said, I can't believe how many crosshoppers, crosshoppers there is on this highway. I wouldn't be surprised if some of them go away, yeah. Well, with that, it's not our fault. No, and we, we shared that.
We shared what it's, when the railroad was raising, when the railroad. Like how fast, they took off. Railroad got raised. Yeah. And they had on, the highway last year, such more, I was the one that's there there, going on the section lines. The main gun. But it wasn't a main gun, oh, it's even special, I disappeared.
Well, they had to get township to approve that, so. And that one that. You know, west of my place there, they, they took out. Kind of wish they would have locked it in, but that wasn't my call, and, you know.
I get the ones that wanted to use a bunch, that were used.
Like from Eastones, that food development on the highway, east of town happened more for housing developments and stuff, so there was one put in, and then another one put in, and then another one put in, so it's gonna be a little bit harder to pull on some of those, because then people are gonna have to drive to act through non-ram. People are gonna be able to name your.
Like a lot of equipment.
Yeah, or, well, yeah, some, there's permits. It's gonna be interesting to see what they do.
He volunteered that information, I wasn't trying to lie.
He, he just, he just.
Had a lot of people to say, but yeah, there's a lot of them, I was there. Yeah, we had this discussion.
At this time, you know, where the section lines coming into the road, they're gonna make those like nineties, that's part of the project, they're sealed. And it was gonna have one turn lane, by the V plot, somewhere in that area. And then additional one. So the speed limits are certainly gonna reduce the speed limits for that section now. But other than that, nothing's in concrete. So they're still looking, I turned my, and I said. Nah, he was just searching at this thing. I just turned to the animation and he said, it's so. We're working on a plan for a rezoning, it's thirty months. It's gonna be interesting between us and the code driving and mine.
Yeah, how they're gonna fit them.
Uh, because there's not, I don't believe there's a solid heat. Between the code driving and mining is close, but they would still have to move it, because that's the new.
Yeah, sure.
Four lanes each, that's what they want on their highway route.
Well, part of that concern was when this all came on our plate back in sixteen or something, when we were lobbying on what to turn into mining, because it was just such, and they said, we don't want to stack turns on top of turns, but it's like, well. That corner, and then it was, there was no turn there, it was just tassy. We're lucky we got that turn out, put in, but yeah, now it's gonna be stacked on top stacked, so then you get the problem, somebody's gonna take. Put their blinker on, thinking they're jumping in the second turn lane, and then they're in first, and it takes some ease to.
I think we gotta figure out our issue with the code driving now. They're gonna probably take, if, if that goes through or the south of train, probably are. Approaching to take, take uh code driving out. So that way the trucks should come into that front, and get off the highway instead of sitting on the highway, blocking the whole intersection on this. And I was fine with that, because they give us, by access, our full equipment going on the highway and. Keeps their trucks out the highway, so they're a lot safer.
Should have been a frontage or interior, you know.
Yeah.
It should have been a tight frontage all the way back across the road, so all the way back to the gas station. Overpassing.
We still have about seven minutes to go before our hearing begins. Ed, do we want to bring up anything with uh? LEC?
Yeah, we can, yes.
Well, as everybody's aware, that we got the non-compliance order from the DLCR. Oh, about two weeks ago now, uh, initiating some issues with. They added more towards, leaning towards staffing, where we needed to reduce the number of inmates that we were housing. Uh, down from a hundred and five that were licensed to down to fifty. Um, which put everybody in a scramble mode, um, because we were sitting with. A lot more than fifty in there, and Ramsey County ourselves, we were sitting at fifty-seven, I believe, wasn't it?
We had the highest population.
And we, we still do, and, um, the, you know, so that created an issue of. Where we're gonna go with, with our prisoners, and, you know, Bo and Sheriff Nelson, we're from the judges, and we're dealt some.
Yeah, we're, we're below the cap right now, it's a fifty percent hard cap, we're at forty. As of today, uh, we are still working with Rob to figure out what we can do to help train. Get our jail population a little bit under control. This is not a common, or this is not a unique problem, this, there are other facilities all over that are having the same problem. Can't keep staff, you can't keep staff, you can't keep your numbers high, so it's kind of a. You know, three cups on the table, move them here, move them there, kind of deal, so. We're doing the best we can right now.
I think, yeah, with me or eighteen generals on this case, I was. We're able to move them. And they had some other actions, I remember with all that, so.
Yeah.
We expected it to be seventy-five. And when it came down, came to that day, it was, it was down fifty. There was a lot of negotiating that day, it was, that was it.
That was a hard Wednesday. We were like, bro, the day was eighty-nine to fifty in the week.
Yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, it was a, it, it was a big blow, but I, you know, we're pretty confident that Rob's. They, they getting on top of things and will work things out, and, but like Bo had mentioned, it's a, it's a staffing issue. That's been coming along, and we've seen it statewide, is our staffing shortages. Um, and this is one of those areas where staffing shortages will really come back and, and haunt a facility. And so, DLCR has got that. In their, you know, you're gonna need this number of staff or X number of uh inmates and. You know, and, and proper training and protocols and procedures to go along with that. And, and all that, you know, when you have turnovers, high-rated turnovers, that training sometimes, uh, doesn't get. Completely taken. Taken on, so.
When we raised the wages to twenty dollars now, that was a huge, they got applicants and. People didn't like, like, my higher than them.
And, and then Rob indicated it was, it was better quality applicants than, than what they've been seeing in the past, so. That, that was a positive move, and, and something we're seeing around the state from uh. Facilities that, uh, you know, I think Pierce County just raised theirs, Gas County did it, all at the same time, we had, um. Grand Forks did it, uh, happening all over the state, uh.
I don't think we need to raise it more.
Boy, what's twenty dollars an hour? Forty grand a year, I mean, that's a, that's a really tough job, forty grand a year.
Yeah.
I know, we had to hire teachers for, and it's not paying them enough.
I agree with that.
A hundred percent.
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, it's basically, they're giving us the opportunity to get some new staff in and get them trained. And then hopefully, if we show progress in the first month, correct, then we can apply and move the cap up, and if we've done our job correctly, Rob's gonna do that for us, then. We'll have quality staff, have them trained up, and then they won't probably move the cap, I mean, that's all.
They've got a new gentleman out to DLCR by the name of Steve Hall, and he ran Verde Martin County Jail for a hundred years. He's not as old as I am, we're not too far off, so. He's coming the twenty-sixth of this month, and we'll stay through the weekend, and I think he'll be a huge help, I would. I think he brings a lot of knowledge. I think he's gonna help everything a lot, of course, so we're very interested in that, we have him coming, so.
So while it was a, a setback, I think it's a setback that, I mean, in the long run will be for the better. Um, we'll come out of the thing uh better than ever. It is a ninety-day, uh, hard, uh, fifty cap, and then from there, we can go, I think, is it seventy-five or eighty?
You can go to eighty.
Eighty for another hundred and eighty days, and then after that, we can apply for, you know, the, the full licensure of a hundred and five. And, uh, he granted them.
I know Lance Anderson, he did a, above Steve Hall, and he, uh, he's generally in charge of the jail, but that's going on, he told me that. Steve Hall would be the big help, yeah, and he was very happy. He was with Lance at that, at that meeting. I think that worked very well.
I think so.
For what it's worth, I just, I'd just like to give a little kudos to Sheriff Allison for making it work. These, had his deputies running all over the state for.
Yeah.
So. He deserves a little, but thank you if you got a call later.
No, I think that's, yeah. So with that, it is, uh, six o'clock, and. We have to close the commission meeting and, you know, just continue into the hearing.
Yes, good.
Okay. Good enough. So the next item on our agenda at six o'clock, we have a. A request for a tax exemption. From the North Dakota Petroleum. Make sure I've got that. President, uh, North Dakota Petroleum Equipment Incorporated. Uh, letter from Elizabeth Blacker, Tax Director. We have with us uh Mr. Joe Gleason, President of North Dakota Petroleum Equipment. Waffle Mr. Gleason, also present is Superintendent of Schools, uh Douglas Lake Schools, uh Matt Bocchi. Matt, can you still come in? We have uh. Letters from the Department of Commerce indicating that uh. The business will be a primary sector business. And a little bit about the expansion that. North Dakota Petroleum is looking to do East of Town. And they're here asking for a hundred percent tax exemption for five years. Mr. Gleason, you wanna talk a little bit, give everybody kind of a, a brief uh call on what exactly must put the prayer from this?
Yep, we're uh, we're sales insulation inspection engineering as the petroleum industry. Mainly focused on the ground fuel system and propane systems. And we work. Mainly North Dakota Minnesota now, but we have, we're expanding some into Montana and South Dakota as well. And every year that just getting bigger. Part of the project here is eight and a half acres out there, just used to be code driving on Highway Two. And we're putting up uh just under twenty-five thousand per year facilities. Uh, one building needs to fix for manufacturing. And uh, expanding into a few different services. One of them will be uh D O T carbon tank inspections. Which uh state, uh North Dakota and Minnesota are actually lacking quite a bit right now. Uh, nobody, the closest company there right now was actually Farlow. And they're not doing a whole lot like they used to, so there's been. A lot of businesses asking me for something to get that off the ground, so. We're gonna put in a specific bay in one of our buildings for that purpose. We're also uh expanding into a few different things, A S M E R stamp, which is repair. Welding qualification for repair and alteration pressure vessels. Really have no competition. Uh, anywhere in this half of the state for that either. How many, how many you gonna hire? How many we gonna hire or how many we hired already? I'll be mad at you. Well, the next five years uh goals is get to about twenty, twenty-five. Yeah, we hired five people this year already.
You're all in positions?
Correct. Our uh, our welding positions are a little unique, it's, it's uh. Our welding position's at the higher end of the P scale. You know, with uh certified high pressure piping welding. Uh, no, we do a lot of uh state welding as well. There'll be some flex for, once we get into some of the manufacturing stuff, there'll be some. But you know, our welders right now are making twenty-eight, thirty-two dollars an hour for benefits and. They go a lot of hours in summer, right now, so, you know, it's gonna come up, they're welding sixty.
Sixty years.
Yeah. And a lot of these guys, uh, well, actually I've talked with Matt and we're open to maybe get to take advantage of some of the primary sector business stuff to Department of Commerce. And work with the VOTech at the high school and, you know, there's some incentives uh with the primary sector. To go after and try and get some internships out of VOTech and keep some of the kids well played and adopt some other incentive for the state will pay. Uh, up to seventy-five percent of a kid's uh. College tuition if he agrees to come back and work for the company that's got him going for two or three years. So the goal is uh to work with Matt and the VOTech there and. And try and get some of those kids on board and keep them around the area and increase some good paying jobs.
Eric, reading the thing that you're, at some point in time, you're gonna start, one of the plans is to start actually building vessels too then?
That's the goal.
That's the goal. It takes a while to get to that point, dude.
Been a goal for a long time, but it's like. We have three buildings, one's a hundred fifty, a hundred by hundred fifty, fifteen dollars per feet, the second one is four by two hundred. Which is perfect for a seven line type s- system. So it's eight thousand square feet, then we have another just uh store building, which will be thirty by sixty. Great crown, and then we might, the forty by two hundred will be one up to September, so next month. We ordered the one hundred by one fifty. Uh, two months ago, I believe, and it'll get here at the end of February. That's how far up the steel building factors are. And I said, I just gotta ditch this income because it'll be another year, I mean, if I'm gonna complete it, it's gotta be another year. We're gonna ditch concrete down this fall though, so we can start working on it this winter. On the smaller, go ahead, you want the distinct building or steel? Yeah, we twenty. One by one hundred by one fifty is steel. I guess they're all, they're all steel. And uh, the new one's twenty-six foot. Uh, tall, the forty by two hundred and the thirty by sixty are twenty-five foot tall, they all go over thirties. So.
Mr. Rockinell, how much capacity do you have on welding class at the high school?
One year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, typically within our classes in general, um, I would say it's about twenty, but in most classes I say it's even less than that, probably about uh sixteen to eighteen.
Really?
But again, that's with our program currently where it's at, so.
And after that, they have to go off to science related like that to get their two year for the associates, plus you're doing specialty weldings, so I'm sure they have to do additional training.
Typically, I mean, it's something you could learn on the job with time, but, you know. A lot of our weldings that come out of the, I don't know, pretend or down South Dakota, I think it's later in tech. So usually they come up there very soon. Not necessarily, they still have to take welding certification tests for us. We have our own welding qualification procedures. But. Some of them can't, I mean, some of them can come out of college and pass that test. But some of them.
A, a whole other level of, of. Qualifications when you're starting with that high pressure pipe welding.
Correct.
You know. That's uh.
So our codes, you know, will fall under A S M E B three one, which is high pressure piping, and then you have uh. A S E section eight, section nine, for pressure vessels. And basically the repair and alteration pressure vessels is. Not quite as difficult, yeah, but it's fairly difficult, it is a time consuming process. Actually, we, we're, we got a week set right now for the test points, so my guys can take the test. So, but you know, that's kind of everything right now, but it's steel related, you're waiting. Waiting for bands.
So township was on board with it, schools funded it?
You know, in the past, uh, the school system has never opposed areas such as this, uh, and moving forward, we're always in favor of. Uh, business expansions and, and such as I hope the businesses will be in favor of school expansion as well down the road or whenever it happens, uh. You know, we wanna support the business community, it's good for the community, it's good for the Dallas area. Um, so yeah, I mean, just like that, again, I would hope the community would support the school system that. Uh, cause we all work together and it's what's good for the community, it's good for all of us. Candy, I gotta say, I love the red, white and black with the nail polish today. With school system writer, school writer on the corner, I just gotta say, I love, I love the, the school spirit.
Yeah, that was uh baseball.
Oh, there we go, perfect.
I've been looking at it, I, I couldn't pull it up, but when I was reading it. The, the, the primary sector property tax exemption, it appears as though the city has consistently given out a five year one hundred. And I think it's only reasonable from our county perspective, we're gonna do something so that we have competition, you know, whether you're building out. Out east of town or if you're building in the, the industrial park that we have. Just so it's, you know, cause there's only so much industrial park left in that two years, so I mean. It was that kind of perspective.
I'll make sure they approve it.
Okay.
Five years, one hundred percent.
Okay, uh, second.
Oh, I'll second.
Moving second, I would go ahead and approve the five year, one hundred percent tax exemption request. Further discussion, I think it's very exciting. Just the, you know, i- i- in that whole welding and concept and manufacturing within our, our community. The expanded, that's fantastic, you know.
I think you're on the right path to insane and, and saying, and saying that work with the VOTech, try to keep, you know, because that's the easiest way you're gonna. Gonna fill jobs is find people that wanna stay here and are qualified to stay here.
We've been, we've been having to hunt down all over the country.
Yeah, lately, basically trying to find people that like to hunt fish. So it's uh.
You got a lot better chances having somebody that's gonna stay around here, if they got family here, they like it here already. Having a whole somebody from God elsewhere.
Like the last time we did trances.
We did an annual payment, and how much was that?
Fifteen hundred dollars a year for five years, which is not. When we did trances.
My application itself.
If it work, they gotta refile every year.
No, no. It's just that when, when trances, you did that last one.
You gotta refile with this state or something every year? Where does the money go?
They put, you, we said put it in lieu of the taxes.
Payments in lieu of taxes in the United States. A problem.
That, that's, that's part of the, part of the standards procedure, basically, okay?
We might have to draw new rules if you.
We'll make, we'll make you a trade here.
Well, we, we have to. Uh, approve the initial motion or amend the initial motion.
Essentially a friendly amendment, so if he's filing, demanding his motion, I took a second, so I'm proud of that, amending that motion.
Okay. Lawyers.
It was great.
Okay. Motion in a second did to approve the tax exemption request with a hundred dollar annual payment. In lieu of taxes. Thank you. And beginning in.
Beginning in.
Twenty, twenty.
So what, what was the final?
Beginning in twenty-two.
They're planning on having all the buildings up next year.
Yep, so we will probably move out this time. By the time we do everything kind of settled in over there.
Yeah, put it on us twenty-two then. Well, twenty-two wouldn't have all the improvements because it's a February fifteenth date, correct? So, any, it would only be, you'd only get the exemption on anything that's sitting out there next year on the fifteenth of February. It was for the twenty-two tax year. Correct?
You're planning on having all three buildings?
This year, though.
Next, but in twenty twenty-two.
Yes, so everything would be standing in February on the date on, in, for the twenty-three tax year and twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Next year's twenty-two. So uh, it would be for the twenty-three tax year.
Right.
So you would be paying the twenty-two taxes, whatever you have up.
Sure.
And then you would get, just so you can get the full exemption on what, when we get the whole project. They have five years, twenty-three, twenty-eight, twenty-three through twenty-eight, that's a hundred per. And actually we're gonna have some property taxes again, whatever is already established.
Right, because that will help you on the setup. Well, we're just crossing fingers, I think it does show up because we're in, you know. The goal is to get the, the building that's showing up in February is having, has all my offices and, I mean, that's where. It's gonna be a corporate office there, so we, that's where we can probably hire some people, well, so.
I'm gonna be, no, you're, you're not gonna trust my building to be there until it rolls in on the truck.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-three through twenty-eight?
Perfect.
That work for everybody?
Yeah, as, as long as we're saying it correctly, they can keep it.
Any, any objections?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, and I apologize if I'm only being able to hear this, this, of what's said. Uh, Mr. Gleason, I really appreciate you coming in and it's such a pleasure to hear the people are helping expand the community. And I hope that that shows through for you, and I think that it's great for the community. But my objection to the last one that came in, uh, was on the county's end, I feel we have no brackets by which to. Uh, sort of quantitatively make adjustments, you know, we have no light to stand on. If I go, we wish to deny someone for the fact that we didn't use any standards to approve people. Uh, so I'm not gonna vote against this, but I, I wanted to be known that I, I intend to abstain from this vote. And it's not because I don't believe in what you're doing or the project, uh, it's just because I believe that the county needs to do a better job. Has better data parameters, uh, so that the only barrier to getting a tax exemption is not just whoever happens to walk in the door and ask for it. Because I think that's kind of how we are on our end, because that's for ourselves. Um, so I will say that like I said, I appreciate what you're doing and I hope that passes for you. Uh, but it is my intention to abstain from the vote of mental that I wanted to mention.
Do we noted? Anybody else? Questions, comments? Proceed with the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll do that, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Light phone?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye?
And Lucas is upstairs. Got it.
Got it. Motion passed, tax exemption approved. Congratulations, best of luck to you, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, and thank you uh Candy and Vessels here, they helped me out a lot of the big work that I here, they, they really lined up.
Yeah.
I'm watching those uh tanker inspections. There's, there's multiple different inspections, some of them are every year, just, you know, visual, and there's the tests of five years. So.
Thank you, everybody.
I have a question too. We have tank inspections that we always have to take on the problem, people out there. Are you gonna be able to do those, are those the D O T inspections?
Yes.
That'll probably be by the time that.
We'll have to talk because there's a lot of.
Down the line.
Not particularly. Level of extension.
They're gonna take business from us?
Anything else for the greater the order? Any other announcements? I think that's good. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you very much.
Where's he at?
I'll do my best.
That's probably worth ones in here.